Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 15, 2019. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge. Welcome Girl Scout Daisy Troop 18227 up front here. They are going to lead us in the pledge this evening. Flag's over there. All right. Anytime you're ready, girls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, why don't you just hang on one second there? I'm sure somebody's gonna want to get a picture of you up there. And let's just take a moment and you can introduce yourselves. We'll start with the leaders and then we'll go through the scouts. Maybe you just introduce yourself and we'll work them like this way.
Kalina Kolb.
Natalie Larson.
Madeline Larson.
Mackenzie Ryan.
Annabelle Martin.
Brittany Hoverston.
Autumn Hoverston.
Madison Ronnie.
Olivia Kolb.
Cara Primo.
Thank you. They had a... They've been spending time touring the facilities. They've been touring, I believe, somebody gave them a tour of the police station. And we just thank you for coming and we thank you for leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you for having us. Thank you. So we got a picture with Mayor and Council.
So you want them to stand up behind you?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
All guys in back.
Keys. Or Girl Scout cookies.
No. Some of ones.
Thanks, girl. Thank y'all.
And Jordan, I bet you thought everybody was here for you tonight.
Yeah.
Let's see here. So let's see. So we did the pledge. Now let's do the roll call.
Councilmember Scoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'd like to adopt the agenda with one adjustment. We'd like to add item 1A. We've got Representative Peggy Scott, Representative Peggy Scott here to talk with us. And so we'll add 1A under Proclamations and Presentations.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is an oath of office for new police officer, Chief Wise. Thank you. Maybe they are all here for you.
I had no idea it was so popular, Mr. Mayor. Oh, wait. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, you realize it's our tradition to introduce our new police officers to the community. As a Coon Rapids resident myself, it's important, the relationship that the officers have with our citizens, the kind of service that they do for our citizens and their level of commitment is second to none. And as a part of that, yes, he will be taking his oath of office. But this also is an opportunity to tell the people of Coon Rapids a little bit about him and a little bit about this oath and his expectations as he begins his service to our community. So, in just a few minutes, I'd like to introduce here Officer Jordan Gertz. Officer Gertz was born in Fridley and later moved to Coon Rapids. And he lived in Coon Rapids as a young man. And I like to say he has some Coon Rapids dirt in his blood, which matters to me. From Coon Rapids, though, he moved to Shakopee where he graduated from high school down there. Out of high school, he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps where, in four years, he earned his way to Sergeant Stripes with the 4th Marine Division. He performed a variety of services overseas before being honorably discharged. He worked, subsequent to the military, he worked private security before becoming a community service officer here for us in the city of Coon Rapids in 2017. And I think I've told you before, the community service officer for the department is literally one of the toughest jobs we have in the city. Talk about getting pulled in a bunch of different directions all at the same time. It's a big challenge. And we like that it's a big challenge because we want to see if our community service officers, in particular, if they'd make good police officers. And in this case, we believe we found a good one. We are now very happy to have promoted Jordan from community service officer to police officer in our department. His first day as a police officer trainee was September 24, 2018. Since that time, he's been trained and evaluated on a daily basis, pushed to excel at meeting the needs of our community. Our training program is designed to be extremely stressful and to be certain that we've hired the right people. And in Jordan, we believe we have hired the right person, which leads us to where we are now. Jordan, tonight you are officially graduating from our field training program. Symbolically, we've removed your trainee badge as you've now earned your permanent badge, which is number 161. And it'll be a unique number to him. That'll be until the end of time. This badge, Jordan, symbolizes two things. First, it symbolizes a faith that the many people who've had a hand in your training and selection have in you. But secondly, and most importantly, never forget that the badge belongs to the people of Coon Rapids and they're entrusting you with it to provide excellent service to our community. And it means, it's a big deal and it means a lot. You have become a member of a proud organization of dedicated professionals. And on behalf of that organization, I welcome you into our police department family. Know that your peers and colleagues, myself included, will do all we can to help you succeed. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask his wife Samantha and his son Liam to come to the front and they're gonna pin his badge. And after that, Mr. Mayor, if you'd issue the oath of office, that'd be great.
Sure. This is Samantha, his wife, his son, so it's nice to be here. It's great. It's great. And now I see it's a reminder to you that Marines are Marines forever. USMC, I like it. All right, so let's see. Why don't, Jordan, why don't you raise your right hand? And then I will... You want to hold the mic?
Sure.
All right. All right. If you would repeat after me, sir. Hi, Jordan Gertz.
Hi, Jordan Gertz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
In the county of Anoka.
In the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Great. Thank you very much. here. Please don't take this personal.
Don't take it personally.
They always do this.
I'm glad to be upstaged by a police officer, trust me. I had to warn him about the initiation later, seeing all the hell of his colleagues were here.
We don't do hazing here.
What's that?
We don't do hazing here.
No, no hazing. That's his place outside of city council chambers.
So Representative Peggy Scott, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for fitting me in the agenda. And it's a joy to be here. It's a joy to represent part of the city of Coon Rapids. And congratulations to Officer Gertz and the entire department. I know, I think it was last week was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day or something like that. And we're certainly so appreciative of those that protect and serve. The legislative session, I just wanted to let you know, is in full swing. And we are open for service. So if there's ever anything that I can do for the council here, the city in general, or any of the people in the public, that's what I'm here to do, is to serve you. And whether it's somebody like the Girl Scouts wanting to come down for a visit, a tour of the Capitol, or have a meeting in my office, I'm open for that. Do call ahead, though, so that I can make room in my schedule at any, at any time. It looks like there's some really exciting development projects going on in Coon Rapids. A large apartment building, it looks like. A large housing development's gonna be coming in. And then the Lyanna Call Center that's gonna employ, was it 500 people? What a great asset for our community. So really, this is more than anything, just a hello and please know that I'm available to be of assistance. And I've always enjoyed working with you folks and I'm glad to do so in the future.
So Representative Scott, anything you see that comes by your desk that says Highway 10 on it, we want that.
Yep.
And anything, and the new project that we've been working on now for a couple of years is the, trying to get a connection between Highway 610 and Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Oh, okay.
When you drive down 610.
Yep.
All you can do is go east.
Yes.
Or west, I'm sorry. You can only go west from Coon Rapids and you can only get off 610 when you're going east.
Okay.
So we're trying to get a full interchange at Coon Rapids Boulevard so you can actually take advantage of the rest of the road and go east.
Well, I would be glad to sign on to that bill. I've already signed on to one for the third additional lane on Highway 10. I think I've signed that thing for the last, I don't know how many years. And maybe one of these times we'll actually get it through. And maybe this year, maybe next year, a bonding year will be the year. But it's a really important artery to our communities and helps commerce flow much better and people commuting to and from work. So, thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to item number two. Approval of the minutes from the January 7 meeting. Your Honor. Councilmember Wells.
Approve the minutes of January 7.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Kicker, to approve the minutes of the January 7, 2019 meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
All abstained.
The motion carries. Two abstentions, Councilmembers Johnson and Demmer. We are on to the consent agenda. The first item on our consent agenda is actually item three on this evening's agenda. And it's to approve our 2019 workers' compensation coverage. And we are looking at approving, we have three options, and we're looking at approving option three of the retro-rated plans with the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust. And if anybody wants more details than that, Mr. Stemwell can cover it, I'm sure. Next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 19-4, approving the 2018 SCORE Grant for Anoka County and authorizing execution of the funding agreement. We will be receiving reimbursement for eligible activities up to $215,177 for our recycling program. And item four... Wait a minute. Item five. Yeah, thank you. I thought I just read that. Item five is to adopt Resolution 19-24, establishing certain fees and charges for adult sports leagues effective January 1, 2019. And this is for the proposed fee increase for the summer softball doubleheader league from $900 to $950. This increase will make the fee more comparable with fees charged around the area. Item six is to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to JCPenney Corporation Incorporated Doing Business as The Salon by InStyle inside JCPenney, located at 12550 Riverdale Boulevard, pending a successful background investigation. And then item seven on the consent agenda, and sorry, the item seven on tonight's agenda, part of the consent agenda, is to approve the Ninth Amendment to the Service Contract between the city of Coon Rapids and the Center for Energy and Environment, CEE, to continue administering the CRHIF-funded home improvement and down payment assistance programs. And that was, so let's just go back up here. And that was the formerly known as Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation, is now known as the Coon Rapids Home Improvement Foundation. So CRHIF is a new acronym for us. And then the last item on our consent agenda this evening, which is item eight on this evening's agenda, is to receive and approve the 2019 Pay Equity Report as submitted. Does anybody want any thing described or explanations or... Okay, good. Not good. I mean, whatever you want. It's up to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion questions? Councilmember Demmer?
Super small, probably a template update, but the workers' compensation comes from Sharon Legg.
Well, I think probably, I assumed it probably did.
Okay.
She's been on for two weeks. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, yes, in fact, Sharon is still... I'm working behind the scenes. No, in fact, she did write that memo prior to her retiring at the end of December. So I got it. Fitting just to leave her name on.
Wow, one blast. Okay. Didn't want anyone new to not get credit.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is moved and approved. We are on to item nine, which is to consider Resolution 19-26, establishing a tax increment financing district 1-33, Port Evergreen Apartments. Matt or Grant or whoever wants to... Somebody want to cover this a little bit?
Mr. Mayor, I can just make a couple of brief comments and then turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Brown. So this is an item that we talked about at the work session, as you know. Matt Brown is gonna talk a little bit about the TIF plan, which is, which is before you this evening, as well as a term sheet. We do have the developer. If the council is interested in sharing the presentation that you saw at the work session, we can, we've got it loaded on the computer. So if council would like to see that again, we can certainly do that. But the developer is also here to answer questions. We have Jason Arswald from Ellers, who helped us evaluate the request for the TIF assistance. So he's available for questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Yeah. And Your Honor, members of the council, we've obviously considered this at a few different meetings over the course of the fall and earlier this winter. So Real Estate Equities is a St. Paul-based developer. They propose a 184-unit workforce apartment project on a site that's currently owned by GON companies, right at the intersection of Highways 47 and 610. It's accessed off of Springbrook Drive. All of the units in the building will be restricted to households earning no more than 60% of area median income for a family of four. Last year, at least, that represented about $56,000. Or actually, I believe that's a smaller household than that even. This site is zoned for multifamily residential. It's located in the Port Evergreen zoning district, which is governed by a master plan. But that master plan guides the site for high-density residential development. This scale of a project generally would be allowed by the Port zoning district. So the financing structure of the project is that it would use federal tax credits. So this would be using what's known as the 4% tax credit, as well as conduit bond financing through the city. So there's no real risk on the city's part through that. It's simply conduit financing. The developer would also be seeking TIF from the city. This, a project with these rent levels would qualify for a housing TIF district, which can run for a maximum of 26 years. As we've examined the sources and uses of this project, we've concluded that the need for gap financing is approximately $1.4 million, which represents about 15 years of tax increment. So it wouldn't be going for the entire district. Overall, staff is pretty comfortable with that level of assistance, at least on a per-unit basis. The assistance is a little bit lower than what we'd find with a lot of workforce housing projects, and also as a percentage of the total development costs. So at tonight's meeting, you'll be asked to hold a public hearing. Also, consider the TIF plan. We have a resolution for you to consider that would be used to adopt that TIF plan. We'd also ask that you consider a term sheet, which is attached to the memo. We're not quite at a point to have a formal development agreement for this project just yet. Instead, we're asking you to consider a term sheet. In addition to the terms of the financing, that term sheet establishes some components of amenity levels, finish levels for the project. That's something I know we've heard from you, kind of wanting some sort of mechanism in place to ensure that there's a certain level of finish or amenity associated with this project. And those, those would also be included in a development agreement once we get to that point. As for next steps, the EDA will also consider the TIF plan after this meeting tonight. We'll also consider a resolution related to an interfund loan. There will be a number of other approvals that would come before the council related to the project. A resolution related to the bond financing would come relatively soon, in addition to the development agreement. Also, provided the TIF plan is approved this evening, the developer will be submitting planning applications fairly soon. The project would require a site plan. And because that is in the Port District, that would also, not only go to the Planning Commission, but would also go to the council. So there'd be an opportunity for the council to weigh in, once there's a little more detail around what, what amenities will be included with this project. So if the council is interested in a presentation from the developer, we can certainly provide that. Otherwise, I can stand for any questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Demmer?
So at one point, we had talked about, instead of doing a 15-year and then the TIF ends and we collect full taxes, doing something more like running the entire 25 years, but doing it at close to 50%. So that we're collecting some taxes immediately and it takes longer for the TIF district to expire. And I was just curious if that caught pursuit. There's, there's reasons such as, you know, as the number of people in the community increase, as the burdens on the infrastructure increase, it's nice to pick up some of the taxes along the way. And so I was curious where that discussion went.
Councilmember Demmer, I guess I don't, I don't remember that particular discussion that we had. I mean, I think the goal of this exercise is to pay off this note as quickly as possible rather than, rather than stretch it out. I don't know how we would structure the financing to kind of capture that sort of an arrangement. I think, once we capture the increment, we either keep it and remit it in the form of a note. I don't know that we can send the increment back to the other taxing jurisdictions. Maybe that's a question for Jason Arswald from Ellers, if Jason would come, step forward, if you wouldn't mind.
Members of the council, Jason Arswald with Ellers. So I think the specific question, you could, once you, it's going to be collected, all of it, regardless, once you create the district. You could annually return increment not needed to make payments on the note. It would be redistributed to the taxing jurisdictions. One thing would be that if you do it that way, you'd simply be applying, not, instead of 90% of the tax increment to payment on the note, some lower percentage that would be determined. Ultimately, though, if you do that, we would be probably paying more interest over time on that note and ultimately spending more tax increment dollars to get the same result, essentially. Which is why when we initially conceived this and when we set up all of these, our goal is to pay it off as quickly as possible and get the whole thing back on the tax rolls as soon as we possibly can.
Have I answered it?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I'm always a little confused on is the different rules around ownership. So I know there's things with HUD housing, I know there's things with TIF. I don't know if someone can sell a property if they're, what is, there was some sort of 20-year ownership requirement. If the TIF is still running, I don't know if that has an effect on it. I'm just sort of curious if there's, if there's any benefits. The thing that comes up is when you say we're gonna do TIF and then we're not truly gonna be processing, collecting, using tax money during that time. And then the police and fire say, well, you know, we'd kind of like to be able to pay for another police officer, another fire department member. And that keeps coming up. Then you just kind of wonder, well, if we were able to collect some of it, would we be more able to pay for the services that the new residents would use? I get the idea that after the 15 years, you're able to pay it right away. But it was a topic that, you know, I was just curious if we dug into when, when it isn't 100% for the whole 26 years, if there's a reason to spread it out versus pay it upfront. I do understand the interest, but depending on how favorable the interest rates are, that still might be a good idea. Right?
It almost seems like the amount compared to our budget is such a minute amount.
Doesn't matter.
It's almost a philosophical question.
Yeah, it was more like if we had that philosophy across all the TIF districts we do. Having, having them running longer maybe makes you less prone to open up more of them too. I'm not sure. But that's plus or minus. So, okay. I was just curious if that discussion had gone on. It sounds like it's just not something you guys think is a great idea. So I'll let it go from there.
All right. Mayor Scoviac?
I kind of had similar questions, and maybe this is for Jason too. But the term of the TIF district itself is gonna be 26 years. But is, in the term of our assistance agreement, then spelled out that this gets paid back over 15 or shorter? So even though the district is 26 years, we're assured of being paid back within 15?
So, Mayor, Mayor...
Back on the rolls in 15.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, that, that's generally correct. The TIF plan that you're approving tonight does not grant any assistance to the developer. It's just your planned document for administering the TIF district. And it's set up to run the full duration to give you maximum flexibility. You'll ultimately have the decision when you want to shut that down. The amount of assistance that's being contemplated to the developer, based on our current projections, we estimate that it can be paid off in roughly 15 years. That's really what the estimate is. Now, what is the development agreement or the TIF agreement ultimately going to say about that? Generally, the way that's set up is it's 1.4 million and however long it takes to repay that. And our hope is that it repays sooner. But right now, we're saying, we're saying it looks like 15 years. Which means that you'd have the option then to either shut down the district or use future tax increment collections for other purposes that you may have in the city for housing-related items.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Mayor. Councilmember Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like, council, do you want me to take them separate?
We have to do a public hearing first.
Thank you. Then I'll make a motion.
All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Hearing none in the matter of the Port Evergreen Apartments, establishing a tax increment financing district. I will open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address council in the matter of the TIF district for the Port Evergreen Apartments? Are we here for a public hearing? Seeing no one for that, we will close the public hearing and reserve comments. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Council, do you want me to take them separate?
I would have to.
Okay. So the first motion I'd make is to approve the term sheet with Real Estate Equities, Inc. Now, the term sheet wasn't attached to the agenda here, but it is attached to the, to the workshop agenda, which was also a workshop tonight. So it's a, it's a document that's been available to the public as well. Is it that term sheet that you want to incorporate by reference here?
Yes.
Okay. So that's my motion, the term sheet that was attached to our... So that's my motion, the term sheet that was attached to our workshop agenda for this evening.
Second?
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries.
I'll make a follow-up motion to adopt Resolution 19-26, modifying the redevelopment plan for project area number one and establishing TIF District 1-33, and I think that resolution is attached to this agenda.
Second?
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And that was item nine. And we are on to item 10. Consider appeal of a planning commission decision, Planing Case 18-18, Site Plan, Conditional Use Permit, Self-Storage Facility Green Partnership. Do we have to remove this from the table? I've never, we've never actually tabled anything in the four years I've been mayor. So do we have to remove it from the table then?
Yes, formally we would.
Does it have to be the tableer who does that?
Nope, it can be anybody.
All right. Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to remove Planning Case 18-18 from the table.
Second?
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Are you satisfied with how that went? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And so we are back. We heard from the appellant last time, and we all have all of their, the letters from the appellant, the letters from the appellant's attorney. I'm not sure how we should go forward. Mr. Stem, what a suggestion?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, if you will, Grant Ferneilis, Community Development Director, has prepared a few comments just to kind of summarize some of the activities that have occurred in the last several weeks, and I guess to outline staff's recommendation in this case.
Thank you. Mr. Ferneilis?
Mayor and Council, I have just a few remarks I thought would be appropriate, kind of given the history of this particular application, and, and some of the discussion that we've had previously. So, just for the record, this item was previously heard by the Planning Commission back on November 18th of, of last year, 2018. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing. There were presentations by staff and the applicant. There was testimony given, and I should also point out that there was testimony provided by an attorney or legal counsel representing an adjacent property owner at that public hearing. There was a lot of discussion by the Planning Commission. Eventually, the Planning Commission voted to deny both the conditional use permit and the site plan for those applications. The applicant was informed of the right to appeal, and they did so in late November. That appeal, appeal was eventually heard by the council, as you recall, back on December 18th of last year. We had a staff presentation, there was extensive testimony from the applicant, as well as an attorney that represented one of the landowners. And, as you all know, after discussion, the council tabled action on that item. Given everything that's gone on, we do believe that a decision on the appeal needs to be made. We think that there is relevant information and appropriate findings that, that you can consider, and so we wanted to bring that back tonight to make sure that this is done in a timely manner. As you recall, at the December 18th meeting, there were some questions raised about this proposal, especially as it related to the alternative uses, and kind of the viability or feasibility of those uses. What I think we can say about that is that there are other permitted industrial uses. There also is use flexibility to consider things that are not contemplated by the code. The River Rapids Overlay District did establish some permitted industrial uses. Granted, it's less than what would typically be allowed in an industrial district. We think that was intentional. But it does also allow for service, medical, commercial, public, non, nonprofit, and other kinds of uses. We acknowledge that that question is maybe one that's intriguing, one that, that people would like an answer to, but really, the decision that the council needs to consider tonight is not the viability of those alternative uses, but really, this particular application. And really, what the merits are of this conditional use permit, the site plan applications, whether it conforms with the city's land use goals and policies, and ultimately, whether it's compatible with the conditional use permit standards and the River Rapids Overlay District standards. And both the Planning Commission and, and staff determined that those applications did not meet those standards, and therefore, that was the basis of our recommendation, and ultimately, the basis of the decision that the, the Planning Commission made to deny both of those applications. And just briefly, as it related to, so there were, the denial included both the conditional use permit and the site plan. As it related to the conditional use permit, and the staff report provides more details on it, basically, there were two, two things, or two, two issues, two reasons why the Planning Commission concluded what it did. One is that the application did not meet all of the conditional use permit standards that are outlined in Chapter 11, point 3, 304.3, as well as the River Rapids Overlay District standards, which are also in Chapter 11, Section 103. And specifically, the general conditional use permit standards. There are 10 in total, I'm not going to outline what those are, but there were two standards that the application did not meet. One is that the application was not consistent with the comp plan, and the other was that the application wasn't compatible with the existing or intended character of the zoning district, which in this instance is the River Rapids Overlay District. Which then ties into the other findings that, that were made related to the, the specific standards that are outlined in the River Rapids Overlay District. And one is that it did not advance the intent of the River Rapids Overlay District, which is to encourage compact, vigorous, and mixed-use development tied to a common theme, that the application runs contrary to our Port Development System, which we've spent a lot of time on, that it failed to provide substantial amenities, buffers, and other amenities. And then there is also provision, and admittedly, it's kind of an awkward one, related to whether or not it is feasible to construct a sidewalk. If it's not, that would be a basis for considering this particular use. If it is feasible to install one, then it's a basis not to consider it. We will say, as an aside, we think that there's some history related to that provision, and it primarily, what we think, based on our analysis and, and some of the research that we've done, relates to the existing self-storage facilities that are along Coon Rapids Boulevard. There are two of them. We think there was concern about creating non-conformities, and so this language was added to try and address that. That was the basis for the denial of the conditional use permit. As it related to the site plan, the Planning Commission obviously denied that because the conditional use permit was denied, but then it also concluded that the project failed to meet a number of the design criteria that are spelled out in the River Rapids Overlay. There are a total of 15 different design criteria. This particular application did not satisfy nine of those elements. So we thought that was a fairly significant departure from the design guidelines. So the decision tonight is really related to this specific proposal. We fully acknowledge that there's a lot of history with this site, that there are challenges to, to trying to develop it. Not all those things are within the city's control. We also think that there was a lot of work that was put into this, going back to the early 2000s, as it related to the Coon Rapids Boulevard Framework Plan, the comp plan, and the River Rapids Overlay District, which is the set of zoning controls affecting this particular site and the applications that you have before you. Our interpretation of those documents is that the city did not want to encourage additional self-storage facilities. We think there was a lot of conversation about that. We think there's policy and legislative history that supports this conclusion. The project does not, in our opinion, does not meet the conditional use permit standards, nor the River Rapid Overlay standards that we have articulated. The Planning Commission agreed with those findings, and ultimately, denied the applications. And so we have not changed our recommendation since December 18th. The council's options really tonight relate to affirming, amending, or rejecting the Planning Commission's decision that they made back in November. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, if council wants to see that, if there are questions about the particular site plans. I think it's important also to note that this is not a public hearing. I guess it would be up to the council, and I know this city attorney may have some advice as to whether or not additional testimony is taken this evening. I think we would be somewhat reluctant to recommend that you do that. We feel that there is sufficient evidence to make a decision, but certainly, if the council feels that that's something you want to do, I guess I would defer to the, to the city attorney on that particular topic. So that's it in terms of remarks or comments. Certainly, we were available for any questions that you might have.
Council, questions of Mr. Ferneilis, or does anybody want to see that PowerPoint presentation, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
My view has not changed since December. I think the staff and Planning Commission did a good job at identifying findings of fact. And so with that, I will make a motion on the appeal of Planning Case 18-8, Site Plan and Conditional Use Permit, to affirm the Planning Commission decision denying the site plan and conditional use permit, using the stated findings. Is that good?
So motion by Geisler, and a second by Wells. Discussion?
Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I appreciate you guys coming in, talking through it, really making us think carefully through everything, and really taking a, a good look at the, the Planning Commission. I mean, I think this functions well when you have the staff, you have the Planning Commission, you have the city council as a sanity check, making sure that, that they're doing the right thing. As I, as I look through things, you know, my interpretations of the findings align very well with, with the Planning Commission and the city staff found in this case. I think they're reasonable findings, and again, you know, reasonable people can disagree, and I think that helping us look really closely is important. In this case, I agree with the findings.
Other discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
So I, I remember the discussion well, and, and the, the long presentation. I, I candidly started out a little skeptical about whether this would be an appropriate use on this site. And I was also candidly persuaded, after listening to the presentation, that, that there were some legitimate reasons given for what the landowner wants to do here. I will say that I read through all of the findings of the Planning Commission, some of which I agree with, and some of which I don't really agree with, some of which I, I think are a little bit inconsistent. But one of the things that, that I struggle with, with this property is whether there are any feasible uses left for this property. My gut is telling me that there are, that there are some additional feasible uses left, but there are few. They're, and they're not easy to find. And this is a, a project that is being proposed. While it doesn't meet all of the criteria, and I acknowledge that some of the findings of the Planning Commission are appropriate, I still think it's a, it's a viable and, and positive development in the area. So I intend to vote to support the development and to, I guess it would be to deny or overturn the Planning Commission's recommendation. So that's my view on it, and I just wanted to share that with landowner and also with the council as well.
Yeah, I, I, I struggled with this a lot. I've driven by a number of times. I drove, you know, the other night, I drove up Vale Street, and I sat up in the cul-de-sac, and I looked around, and I, and I was just trying to imagine what, what else is going to go there. I just don't, I, I think there's got to be something. I think there has to be something. We've got $50 million of real estate going in across the street from this that's going to change the dynamics of that area, and, and I think there's going to be something. And I think that if we, if we kind of sell out on, on another storage system there, I, I think we can do better. So I'm actually going to support the Planning Commission's decision.
Mayor?
Councilmember Scoviac?
I've got three things to talk about on this. One of them is going to be, I'm kind of changing my mind on this because of the fact of some things that I've learned over the last couple of weeks. And one of the biggest one is the design element, the lack of meeting the design elements that was outlined in the River Rapids area. That's a, a big factor on this. The other thing that I thought about a lot is when prior councils put together this overlay district, the conditional use clause in that district was basically to allow the existing storage facilities on the lot, and allow them as non-conforming. It really wasn't that we wanted more storage on Coon Rapids Boulevard. I think that was clear when that was, was put in place. And thirdly, you have to look back at the history that this plan, the Planning Commission and the council has previously disallowed further storage facilities on this site. So we've got that precedent. So for those three things, I believe we need to uphold the Planning Commission's decision. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker? Yeah, I'd just like to go on record as saying that, you know, we, we've got a great Planning Commission, they do a great job, we got a great staff, and, and I'm supportive of, of their thoughts on this. So I intend to back them.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? And the motion that we're looking at is to, hang on.
Affirm the denial.
Okay, yep. It's, it's that inverted, yeah. So the motion is to affirm the denial based on the stated?
Findings of fact.
Findings of fact. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries with Councilmember Johnson opposed. And, yeah, thank you. I don't know, I, I know there's a lot of frustration. There was a lot of work that went into this plan. All right. Item 11, under new business, consider Planing Case 18-20, consider approval of preliminary plat and Resolution 19-23, granting final plat approval for stronghold addition Saether Bergquist. This seems pretty straightforward. Mr. Harlecker, did you want to, anything you wanted to touch on, on this, or?
Your Honor and council members, what it is, it's, the applicant is proposing to subdivide property that's located on the corner of Foley Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard. If you drive by there, it's the Culvers and Holiday site. It's a three-point, 2.9 acre parcel. They want to split that into two lots, so each business will be on its own lot. There are, be no, there will be no physical changes to the site, access will stay the same, everything will stay as is. It's just splitting it, so each lot will have, each building will have its own lot. Should noted that overall, the, the parking meets, exceeds what's required with those two buildings. However, the way the, the lot line is going, Culvers will be short six spaces on its lot. They will, applicant will be providing a shared access and parking agreement as part of this approval to work out the, that discrepancy. Planning Commission recommended 5-0 to recommend approval, and with the recommendation is that the council approve the preliminary plat and the attached resolution granting final plat approval, with a condition that all comments from the city engineer be addressed, all comments from the Anoka County Highway Department be addressed, and cross-access easements, cross-access and parking agreement be approved by the city.
And so, Mr. Harlecker, so it's, it appears it's going to stay under the same ownership right now, but at some point, if the owner of Culvers and Holiday sold off the Holiday, because of those parking arrangements, the person, the new buyer couldn't put a fence up and say, hey, nope, you're not, you're not parking over here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Councilmember Demmer?
Similar follow-on question. I think it's great that you added the parking agreement be approved by the city. My, my question was, do you ever see, I think this all makes tons of sense, just making sure we don't have any problems down the road where someone starts saying, oh, you're going to have to rent our parking spaces for $10,000 per parking space, right? There's, there's nothing that causes fights that we're going to have to deal with later in these situations? People honor these agreements in perpetuity?
Oh, we're going to the attorney for this one. Mr. Brody?
Remember, Demmer, yes, that's the idea. They're recorded against the property, so they're available on the record.
Okay.
To avoid these fights, even if owners... To avoid these fights, even if ownership changes.
All right, in that case, unless anyone else wants to jump in, in Planning Case 18-20, move the council approve the preliminary plat and approval at resolution 19-23 granting final plat approval for stronghold addition with the three stated conditions, that comments from the city engineer be addressed, comments from the Anoka County Highway Department be addressed, and a cross-access and parking agreement be approved by the city.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Demmer and a second by Kicker. And the only question, the other question I had on this was, there's that third parcel there that Ace Hardware is on. And so, all of the, whatever arrangements were originally in place are also going with that property as well, correct? All the cross-easement and the cross-parking and?
You notice on the preliminary plat, those cross-access easements with the hardware store are shown on the preliminary plat. Those will remain.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. And that motion carries. And we are on item 12. Consider Planning Case 18-23, a zone change, consider introduction of an ordinance approving a zone change 11790 Exion or Zeon Street, SPL Holdings.
We're going to have to create a special ordinance as to how to pronounce that, aren't we? I thought it was Exion.
Yeah, and whoever says it, they go, well, that's it. That's how it's supposed to be, and you go, yeah, okay, whatever. Chief Wise, how do you say it?
Mr. Mayor, it's Exion.
No question.
Everybody from Coon Rapids says Exion.
That's the way I always said it. All right. Well, I'm going with that because if you're going to call the police out to something, you want to be able to tell them what street you're on. Yeah, we don't know where that is, you're on your own, buddy.
Not here.
All right, so, Mr. Harlecker, do you want to, did you want something? Did you already, you haven't done a presentation on this one, right? Because this all looked new to me as I was looking at the parcel.
If you'd like a presentation, I do have a PowerPoint set up. What it is, it's a 3.4 acre parcel. It's currently zoned, high-density residential PUD. Back in 1987, council approved a PUD for a six-building townhouse development back there. Each building would have three units. One building was built, the rest of the properties went into tax foreclosure several years ago, and they were combined into one lot. The applicant bought that lot with intention of, at some point, putting townhouses on that lot. We haven't seen a development plan yet for that, but this zone change is with the intention of setting the groundwork for that future development.
And it will still be a PUD, so we'll still have control over lots, how it goes in there.
Mayor and councilmembers, no, the PUD will be removed as part of this zone change. It would just be zoned moderate-density residential. The PUD would remain over the existing three townhouses that were constructed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody need to note any more than that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
In Planning Case 18-23, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that we introduce the attached ordinance approving the proposed zone change based on four stated findings. One, the proposed rezoning to moderate-density residential is consistent with the proposed land use designation of moderate-density residential.
Councilmember Geisler, hang on a second word. The peanut gallery over here is trying to weigh in on something.
It's just the introduction.
Mayor and council, yes, since it's introduction, we would recommend that council consider it introduced and that we'll bring it forward to the next meeting for a formal vote.
See now, that's entirely my fault. I skipped, I always highlight that. So, and that was why I was looking at this, thinking, why does this seem like I'm looking at this for the first time? Introduction. Yeah, well, thanks for stepping up anyway. All right, so, in the case of Planning Case 18-23, on a zone change, we will consider this introduced. Got it. Oh, so now, actually, I have to hand the gavel over.
Item 13 is to consider an introduction of an ordinance to allow single-family homes in Port Evergreen. And that's all you, Mr. Harlecker, because you know I'm not going to read all that.
Yes. What this is, is an introduction of an ordinance that would allow single-family homes as a permitted use in Port Evergreen. Earlier, at a workshop last fall, council had a discussion regarding this and asked staff to research the issue. Right now, single-family homes are not a permitted use in Port Evergreen. There are roughly 19 single-family lots in the Port Evergreen, generally in the neighborhood that's around the parcel that the council looked at earlier this evening, north of Highway 10, or north of Coon Rapids Boulevard and south of Highway 610. There's a mix of ownership in there, Gawn Companies owns many of the lots, the city owns a lot, there are several vacant lots. And what this ordinance is intended to do is to provide these single-family homes and their owners and the homes an opportunity to fix up their homes if they're needed. Gawn had been purchasing these homes with the intention of redevelopment over the past at least 10 years. That redevelopment has not occurred, so what they've decided to do is to sell the lots individually as single-family homes. And this would allow the future home buyers the opportunity to renovate, upgrade, maybe make additions to the house, and increase the value of the homes. The proposed ordinance would exempt these single-family homes, single-family lots, from the regulations of the Port District as well as the River Rapids Overlay District and the standards of the LDR2 zoning district. And single-family district would then apply to the single-family homes. And staff is recommending that council introduce the proposed ordinance.
Is there questions from Councilmember Demmer?
So, I was actually looking at these numbers. In the late 90s and early 2000s, we were, we were building around 200 new single-family homes per year. And in the 2010s, we were building around 20 single-family homes per year in the city, so a 10x decrease. So, having new places to build single-family homes looks like a good idea to me. The question I have for staff, having both this one and the TIF on the same agenda kind of prompts the question of, I know we have to consider all these things individually, but we also have to consider areas. Are there concerns with putting a bunch of new single-family homes in the same place as a big apartment in either direction, for the apartment or for the homes? Or are you all comfortable with these can be recommended together?
I can attempt to answer that, Councilmember Demmer. No, I don't think so. I mean, if anything, this would, this would make them permitted uses.
Right.
That creates some challenges for them as it relates to financing, so whenever they need to finance, if the zoning is not in conformance, then there are issues. I don't think there are compatibility issues between the single-family area and then the multifamily development that we considered earlier this evening. So, I think the two things would be very compatible.
And I guess the next thing I would, I would ask is, you know, for a future work session, if there's anything at all that we think this means we should change about the zoning along the Boulevard, you know, if, for example, we needed, I don't know, I think they're all commercial anyway, but some amenities for this many new, this many people, if there's new homes being built, if there's new apartments being built, just potentially updating our plan or along there. And maybe it's already just fine, but it seems like we might have a brand-new neighborhood in Coon Rapids, and that's kind of exciting.
That's something we can certainly consider.
Councilmember Geisler?
I just kind of had a question. So, I do appreciate, you know, because if you say we can put single-family homes in, my first question when I read the start of this was, wait a minute, there's an awful lot of design requirements from the port and the overlay, and it's one of the things that was part of our findings for the earlier case. So, I appreciate that they would be exempted from that. Do you foresee any other hurdles as still being part of the port? And would it have been easier to carve them out of the port and just make this straight LDR2?
Yes, councilmember, basically, Planning Commission did look at that, and they wanted to preserve the opportunity for if somebody were to, there's several larger lots or maybe developers came in and bought a couple lots, and they wanted to do an apartment building in there. This, keeping it in the port would allow a builder to do something like that. If you take it out of the port district and do straight LDR2 zoning, then you really remove this area from any possible redevelopment options.
And a follow-up, so if any structure other than a single-family home goes in this area, it would be under the port overlay regulations?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, combined lots and, sorry to dovetail on that, combined lots and if a smaller apartment building were built, would be subject to the design requirements, as I understand it?
If the, an apartment building was?
Something other than a single-family home.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Mayor? Or, every mayor.
The way I understand it, this port is zoned industrial, so this will be, these homes that are there existing are kind of in an area where they can't even fix up their own homes. So, with this exemption, now we allow them to do that, right? Without changing the actual overlay zoning so that, I've always seen that area as potential industrial, and I think our whole city has, but it just has never come to fruition. In the future, though, if it does kind of tend to move that way, then we still have that option, right? It's still there, the underlying zoning.
Correct, the underlying zone remains port.
Okay. Okay. So, that was the question about removing it from the port and leaving it, but this gives us, I think, that flexibility. I'm supportive of this.
Anything else? Planning Case 18-24, we'll consider the ordinance to be introduced. Welcome back.
Thanks. Best job.
So, yeah, just as a quick clarification, I have, one of my real estate clients owns those properties, there are several of them, and one of the vacant lots, if this changes, I will be selling for them. So, because there's a potential, because there's a potential commission in there for me that I had to move away. Is that okay? All right.
Honest and transparent.
All right, so.
If you shared it with all the council, would that?
Item 14 is to consider resolution 19-25 authorizing 2018, 2019 insurance renewals. And other than, it looks like we've been hard on squad cars lately, things are going okay. We had two sewer backup claims that we paid in 2018, so I'm happy we had, yeah, I'm happy we had that for them. Mr. Stemwaddle?
Yes, Mayor, council, and interim Finance Director Francine Hanson's here as well if you have any more detailed questions, but I guess I can say in general that our approach to insurance for 2019 will be similar to that of 2018 with the exception of a new approach towards squad vehicles because of some of our history there and this new option that the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust is now offering. And as councilmembers have mentioned and the mayor have mentioned, we are recommending that we continue to purchase the sewer backup liability insurances we have for the last several years, which allows for a no-fault coverage of $10,000 for such claims.
And we still encourage homeowners to get their own sewer backup insurance, because $10,000 is nothing if the sewage backs up into a finished lower level or, yeah.
Yeah. Mayor, council, that's correct. We do recommend you talk to your insurance agent about that because certainly in a number of these cases, the cost can be much more than that. However, this is the sort of the maximum insurance that's offered through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust in this regard.
All right.
Your Honor?
Mr. Councilmember Demmer?
Okay, so, quick question. Resolution 19-25 is only the sewer backup, so I just authorize the other two bullets as a motion?
Correct.
Okay. In honor of Ron Manning, I would authorize resolution 19-25 purchasing sewer backup liability insurance and additionally authorize purchasing insurance through LMCIT with a $50,000 deductible up to an annual aggregate of $200,000, and authorize maintaining statutory legal limits of $1.5 million per occurrence.
Wow, channeling Ron Manning, I figure it doesn't have to wait for Ward 2 councilmember to second that, but.
Oh, no, as long as I'm here, this is the Ron Manning resolution.
The sewer resolution.
Yep.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Question for staff, this is a, this is a significant increase over 2018's premium. Looks like close to 20% increase, around $70,000. I was just wondering, when we were doing our budget last year, do we anticipate this type of increase? This seems really high.
Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor, council, if I defer to Fran, I'm sure she can probably give you a better lay of the land on how we anticipate this in our budget cycle.
With the insurance claims, we always go within the margins of what we believe the insurance would be as to what the increases will be. So, yes, we did cover an increase in the 2019 budget to, because we knew that the parks were coming in and the splash pad, and that is handled in our insurance reserve fund.
So, there's some additional things to cover as well?
Yeah, we have the finished parks, the splash pad was quite significant of an insurance increase for us. And then, as we finish off the parks in the referendum, we will continue to have increased. And then, of course, our liability insurance increased due to a lot of police activity. So, our rate went up.
That's your question, Mr. Griscoviac? All right. So, we have, and I was surprised, nobody's phone rang. I thought Sharon Lake would call and say. Nothing? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. And that motion carries. And we are on to the open-mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here for open mic this evening? Nobody here for open mic? All right. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are at other business. Counsel? Councilmember Demmer?
So, I try to do this every year, but from air filters to ATVs to atral fibrillation detection things, the residents of Coon Rapids were granted 89 patents this year. So, just a good reminder what clever, clever folks live in the city and, you know, this is a high-tech area. We have some pretty amazing high-tech businesses and, you know, just be proud of your fellow citizens. And if anyone else has any other stat that I should get out at the start of every year, I know how to search this one, tell me what other one I should get out and just send me.
All right, well, that's, that's a good one. That's a good, I like that. Mr. Himmer is not here. So, we're probably, are we going to get any kind of an update on, is there any hope for recovering our side streets this winter? Mr. Stemwaddle?
Yeah, Mayor, council, it has been certainly a challenge, given some of the type of weather we've had, you know, small snow events followed by warming temperatures, the freeze thaw cycle. So, certainly, a lot of the melt occurred, and what's left is ice on sidewalks and streets. And so, it's not for, I'll say, not for a lack of plowing. It is, I think, largely because of multiple events and the timing of those events, and then just the fact that, actually, I think it would help to have more snow at this point to sort of create a base on some roads and sidewalks, provide more grip, but what's left is just these icy patches. So, when the weather was warmer, our street crews were out trying to clear as much of that as they could. If there are particular intersections or areas that are problematic, now we do recommend you send a note or give a phone call to our Public Works Department. We'll dispatch someone out there to take a look at it. If needed or warranted, we will salt that area. However, it's not feasible for us to simply salt all of our side streets. The volume would be pretty incredible and the potential damage down the road. The volume would be pretty incredible, and the potential damage down the road from an environmental standpoint would be rather impactful. But, like I said, if there are safety concerns, and I know generally, you tend, there's ice in the road, people are walking, there's going to be a safety concern, but think of those more acute instances near schools or so forth that we might be able to assist with. Certainly, we want to be aware of those and do what we can. And if there are opportunities, the weather allows going forward, we can try to address those. It doesn't help that we're supposed to get sub-zero temperatures here moving into the weekend, but we'll attack it where we can, but we are at some of the mercy of Mother Nature at this point.
Okay, yeah. And that was kind of the question was, because the specific email I received today was from somebody near Rockslide Park, and he sent a picture of the road, and it looked like most of the other roads, just glare ice, you know? But I don't think there's sidewalks there, so that, you know, when they go to the park, they have to walk on the street, and then there are cars, and it's interesting.
It is.
Yeah. Councilmember Demmer?
Similar, two things. One is, do we have a sidewalk and trail priority similar to the roads so that if there's heavily traveled trails that, the sidewalks especially, they don't clear like the roads because they don't have the black, right? And I've definitely seen some sidewalks that look pretty scary, which then causes people to walk on the roads, which, you know, when it's dark more of the time, it's even scarier. And then, second, are there any things that people should be doing differently to maintain their neighborhood streets? Like, for example, should somebody be out making sure there's a clear down, you know, say, or...
Catch basin?
Yeah, sewer entry. Those sort of little things that people can do to keep the problem minimized, knowing that the city can't go out and salt every single gutter.
Yes, Mr. Stemwell?
Yes, Mayor, council, we do recommend when there's melt that people make sure the catch basin near their home is free and clear, and it will build up probably several times. And so, when the weather was warm a couple weeks ago, we sent out some email blasts to say, "Make sure you check and see if your catch basin is open. Otherwise, it's going to compound the problem. All the water is going to pool there, and you can ice skate on that probably when it's all said and done with." In terms of on your property, I mean, I would say Coon Rapids has a higher standard in terms of sidewalk and trail clearance in that we actually clear sidewalks in the city of Coon Rapids where, you know, there are a lot of cities where it's the homeowner's responsibility. So, we sort of do that first swipe. But if the sidewalk on your property is icy, you know, we would recommend that you attempt some, whether it's salting or clearing of that, shoveling when you have the opportunity, I think would be appropriate. We don't have the capability necessarily to salt our sidewalks, like you might salt the road. Again, the trade-off to that, I'm sure we'd get complaints in the springtime, "You killed my grass." But certainly, I'd say, use those common sense approaches to your own property when you're maintaining it. You know, just because we clear it that first time through doesn't mean that's where the maintenance ends, I would say.
And the city trails along busy roads, do we have a salt plan for those, or do we send somebody out with an ice chipper? I mean, is there anything we do for those, or just hope for the sun gets them?
Generally, we rely on clearing them once the snow is there. If, you know, there are some areas on near-school properties, might work with the school district, and they might have their own plan for salting some of those. We do prioritize near schools, getting those cleared first under major snow events, and then kind of working our way out into neighborhoods and so forth afterward. But no, we don't, we don't necessarily do follow-up on things unless there's another weather event that might trigger it or some sort of larger safety concern that we're aware of. And in the case of the weather right now, it's really everywhere on the sidewalks, and especially on shaded roads, it's more problematic. You know, if you're on the sunny side of the street, it's probably free and clear right now.
Mr. Stemwell, do we ever consider, because we keep referring to the salt mix that we use at the intersections, you know, and this is one of those just odd years that comes up every once in a while. Do we ever just go out with sand, you know, and for some of those streets, you know, just put the sand mix down, or is that effective?
Generally, we don't, you know, we will use kind of a mix, a slurry, to pre-treat things, and the salt we do try to be fairly conservative with, but I don't think we specifically sand particularly. I think we've gotten away from that practice, although I'm not fully aware, maybe there are particular instances or scenarios where we would use that, but generally, I don't think that is an application that occurs.
I used to do commercial property management, and then one of our, one winter, our parking lots got away from us, and we had to bring the sand truck in and just put sand out because we couldn't get, you know, the ice was just there.
I can speak to that briefly. When I was on the watershed district, one of the things the watershed was concerned about is if you're, well, everything ends up running into the watershed. Sand ends up being what they call a suspended solid, and that ends up factoring into their evaluations of the watershed. So, other things don't as much, or they dissipate a lot quicker, and they don't create the same kind of problems where you have to dredge out than some of the holding ponds and things like that that we have as well. So, while I take your point, and I do it on my driveway sometimes, it creates that additional kind of downstream effect.
All right. Yeah, and, well, you know, they got the trucks out, those are the days when it was warm, and they tried to get ahead of it a little bit, and it was the truly, the darned if you do and darned if you don't. You get the email that's from the guy that's just angry because we threw water into his driveway that then froze, and you're going, what do you do? You know? Sorry. So, all right. Other business before, council? Chief Piper?
Mayor, councilmembers, it's probably a good time to let people know that the 2019 Snowflake Day celebration start on Saturday, January 26th, run through February 10th. CoonRapidsSnowflakeDays.com is the website, or Google Coon Rapids Snowflake Days, and all the information, times, events, places, all that's right there for people to partake.
Chief, is the one event that I wanted, I probably shouldn't only do one, but the chili cook-off between the Coon Rapids community groups is, do you remember what the date of that is?
I can try to look it up quick.
I was trying to do that, but, because that's really a fun event for folks to get out and support because they see our fire crew is there and our police department, rotary and lions, and chief?
The 2019 Chili Challenge is Thursday, January 31st, at the Coon Rapids VFW post from 5:00 to 7:00. The cost is $10 for adults, $5 for children, and seniors.
Yeah. Some really good chili there, too. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, one more item. We have a family skate night occurring on the 17th, which is this Thursday at Sand Creek Park. It's something we'll do also in February, assuming the weather allows us to do that, and concessions will be available. The event, I think, runs from about 5:00 to 8:00 or 8:30, and concessions, I think, go to 7:30 that evening.
Family skate night, and that's at Sand Creek Park?
You got it. Thursday.
Thursday. All right. Pretty good. Other business?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and we are adjourned.